Walk out there.
Thank you.
I'd like to say to the board of education, we need to make the early 2024 meeting and conference to go to our next place with 50 else traveling in Jersey. Statement for the final sentence for daytime location is ready. Good for the public meetings at local was taken. The screen says. Stand, everyone just stand for the last.
I question the agents to the line of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Dr. Tobak.
So this meeting is in many ways a wrap up of the current school year along with other actions to prepare for our next school. It includes several items on the agenda that involve public interest. Before we get to that, I'd like to mention that the end of the year, um, this year, and as a result, there's many wonderful events taking place across the district, including our annual field days. Tonight's Tom for Wayne Valley, next week is at Hills. Um, I was thrilled to be able to attend a very special event and Mrs. Reiter attended too. Scotty Colfax Middle School, well-known speaker, Jordan Toma, delivered a very inspirational message to all of our students and staff. And he spoke about how the support he received from his mother meant so much that he struggled in school with learning disabilities. So it was really quite an experience. Also enjoyed attending our annual car show. Of course, this year is a very special year because Mr. Bergen and Mr. Hopper, who are really the driving force behind our automotive program, are retiring. So this is their final car show. Congratulations to them for building a great Wayne tradition. Um, was able to attend Wayne Hills yearbook preview event, which was wonderful, the district science fair. All these fantastic events that mean so much for our students and staff are happening. And I look forward to the many events that are scheduled for the next few weeks as we get towards the very last day of school. In a few moments, the Board of Ed will engage in a public discussion regarding a possible future bond referendum. The public's referendum from earlier this year in March failed by a wide margin of votes. Purpose of that referendum was to maintain our current schools while trying to address increased enrollment due to the construction in the community. We're currently at or near our maximum enrollment at almost all of our elementary schools, and that is without any new construction. The Board of Education is also moving ahead with a new food service provider. On July first, Matt shows food service where we place select so as a food service provider. This will result in new menus, food items, and other changes. This action is included on agenda item O sixteen. Also, agenda item O nine is part of our ongoing partnership with Wayne Patterson. Starting to share that the school district rented a small amount of space to allow for professional development for staff as well as office spaces, which we lost due to the renovation of prekness school and the conversion of those spaces into classrooms. So we're simply continuing to rent the same spaces. Some of our reading lists are included on this agenda as public work session item L two. So it is a public work session item. That's why I know many parents have been asking about the reading list. So it's available for review, although it will be acted upon formally for the Board of Ed next thing. Dave Draschak will be retiring later this summer. You might see him type, but for now, um, we're going to need two new assistant principals for athletics and activities with emergent item T ten, four and five. We're happy to recommend Jason Carsick at Wayne Valley and Ryan Bailey at Wayne Hills to succeed Mr. Draschak, both have excellent experience and long history in Wayne athletics. Also, under emergent item T ten, number seven is our recommendation to appoint Melissa Aborinos to replace Matt Riley as Lafayette School Elementary, oh, I'm sorry, Lafayette Elementary's principal. Melissa Murch is a top candidate during years of process, and she has an excellent instructional background. For the approval, she will join the district this summer after having served in Oradel as an assistant principal for the past three years. She currently works in school with the Rainard students, where she is directly responsible for the supervision of students and staff in grade three to six. She also has extensive experience with scheduling and day-driven instructional practices. Um, as far as the HIV report goes, reporting the following data related to harassment and domestic bullying incidents. Wayne County Public School District, there have been twenty incidents of HIV investigated since my last report, which is a lot. And eight of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of an HIV incident. However, we are still, even though we had a lot for this reporting period, we still are far behind with a number of cases we had at this point last year. I think it's hard to.
Yeah, next thing on the agenda is discussion of possible referendums. Put this on the agenda because more than we're getting to the timeline. Where we're at, we'll be preparing to go out. Get a lot of paperwork and everything together in order to move forward. Avalon Bay is, you know, one thing, I was up there yesterday and didn't notice. They already have the, uh, footings in for the buildings and the concrete pads are already in. That's moving along, so the date that we, the date that we had heard of that they were anticipating was July of twenty five. No, no architect, but the way that's moving, I think that's a realistic date for them. Cause they're not making money off vacant property. So, you know, which then brings ships population to our schools. So, um, we talked about having this discussion and seeing, you know, get input from the board and the thoughts. And how do we move forward? Or don't move forward? That's the question. But if we don't move forward, then, you know, we're gonna have to, we're gonna, administration's gonna have to come together and, uh, you know, look at some other options. We've already looked at options. So, uh, we have to get to the point of we either going to or we're not.
Do we know, do we know what the cost would be to try to attempt to come up with a, another bond referendum number for this election? Cause I mean, I think we heard, um, during the last election for the bond referendum that, oh, it was in an off cycle period. If it was at the general November election, it would be essentially no cost. I mean, is that, is that a real, um?
Right, you would not introduce market correctly, no. You would have no cost to run the election because the county would pay all the coworkers and everything else. They would pay, they'd flip that whole bill.
Well, if I can, I, I do think there is a sliver of that that we're responsible for. I think it's a small amount because that's a special election. It's all, our whole cost, and we went over that recently. It's over half a million dollars that we absorbed related to all the costs. Um, but even we're still today getting a couple of trickles of bills related to some of the county agencies that were involved in it. But as far as the election cost, it is a portion of that because it's split amongst, uh, you know, that, that, that kind of general election that's shared.
So I mean, I'm in favor of, you know, definitely trying again, whether it's, you know, in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. You know, whatever is our best chance of going out there, educating people, educating the importance, um, you know, in this community. I mean, I, I think some people, at least two thousand people, do know that it was very important to, to get a bond referendum done, to improve our facilities in the district and, and to prepare for the future. So I think, you know, we need to, to do something. I know the mayor said if it's a hundred million, he would definitely support us, uh, in going out there. So, you know, we can use anybody's support, so, um, anybody and everybody's support. So I think we're getting to a critical point, um, and we need this.
So my concern about going forward with another bond referendum so quickly, this year especially, is that in order to do so, we have to go forward with the same projects that we have already won. And my concern about that is while most of the projects were very important in terms of maintaining the buildings that we have, there was minimal benefit for the long term in terms of adding enough space to support the growth that we anticipate. So I don't know that there's going to be room to put out even a hundred million dollar referendum for the repairs that we're looking for. And then ultimately then, what are we going to do when we have to start really dealing with the building out of something to support potentially a couple of hundreds of kids? You also now have unfortunately this, you know, this potential thing that could be IHM where we may have to absorb some of those students into our schools. So, you know, and also our turn to build that space could be years before we could actually build out that space fast enough to absorb that, you know, that count. So to me, putting out a referendum, asking for money when we don't know that we'll, and again, that money has to be allocated pretty much to the projects that we've given. We can't just say, all right, we're going to offer a hundred million dollars and then we decide, okay, well, we're going to go this route. We're going to buy a building and fix it up, and that's going to solve the problem, and then take that money and reallocate it. We have to go back out and ask for more money. So to me, the challenge is not having a plan of what's going to address all of the issues that we want to deal with. And just going out, asking for money for all the things that we've already discussed that we know really aren't going to make a tremendous of an impact on our space issues as we need. Don't get along, the maintenance that has to be done, but to me, those projects don't, they don't really resolve our, you know, near-term issue.
I, I, I agree. I, I think, I hate to say this, but people need to feel pain before they agree to something because a lot of the feedback is what you said. You know, like I've heard, oh, there is nothing in it for the growth. Our schools, like Tunisite, parents would say there is, we're already running out of space and you're not giving us anything. You know, from another parent who had kids in the athletics that there was nothing sexy about this referendum. There is no projects that would make them say like, you know, yes, I want to spend money. It was for routine stuff, so I, I, yeah, I agree. It's, I don't know that right now, next year, maybe a couple of years out, maybe they need to feel pain of the budget cuts before they go out, out there. I don't know.
See, I don't, I, I personally don't know that it's the money thing. I think that money is an issue, but I feel like if you have the right plan with the right things, people would support it. You know, it doesn't mean long-term benefit to it, but when you're talking about just doing, one of the biggest complaints I heard was, it was all maintenance items. It was all windows and roofs and, you know, they're all important, but, you know, it's things that they don't really think are going to be, it's, it's not going to help us long-term. And I, you know, I see that point, and I just feel, if we just put the same list back out again, it's going to get turned down again, even if you size it down. You have to have a solution that's really going to give them something that they can say, all right, now this makes sense.
I mean, how, how does a roof not help long-term? How does new windows not help long-term? I mean, that's, you know.
Doesn't add space for students is what I'm saying.
Doesn't add space. Well, that's why we have the prekness school renovation and we had that as an expansion, you know, to be able to cover all the new, um, construction projects coming in.
I don't think the space, how many classrooms are we going to get?
I mean, you know, you gotta walk before you run, so we, we.
How many classrooms are we getting approved this?
Twenty-four, right.
It's nine.
No, no, I mean.
Done a new building. How many we got, when we get the old edition? So that's still like.
Small space.
And then again, when you see the longer growth that comes, how do you go back to them and say, okay, we need another hundred million, you know, to do something else? To me, we need something that's going to be creative to solve the problem. Like, you know, some of the things that we've spoken about during, you know, that are in flight, those seem to be the more reasonable solutions should they work out. Just my thought.
I, I think also that I heard, um, you know, some of the feedback that I'm sure we've all heard is that, you know, a lot of the maintenance part. But I think once people realize the influx of students, we already have people talking about class sizes, right? So that's a real problem that needs to be addressed. So I'm not sure, you know, I kind of agree with having, um, something more concrete that people can see and really understand how that will affect them and their educational experience. So.
I, I wonder if we can break down, let's say, like if we can look at project like the boilers alone, right? Because right now the maintenance is astronomical when they have to actually make a part to make it work. So is there such a way that you would look at like project on a little scale and say, this year we'll do this one, next year we'll ask another question? And just kind of lay out the plan that find, you know, you don't agree to ask for all this at the same time. Is there a way to maybe do it by piecemeals and ask every election, ask a question and get a chunk of money and just move it along? I mean, is that?
Well, that's, that's what we're thinking about now. So instead of a hundred seventy million, you know, maybe we go with a hundred or maybe we go with, you know, another number.
That's still a lot. I think hundred is still a lot if you're.
See, everybody, everybody sees this big number, but per household, it was three hundred seventy. Little Ferry, which, you know, they had a thirty-five million dollar bond referendum that was approved, or was it thirty-nine million? Costs six hundred fifty dollars per household and it was approved. So I mean, you know, you can't look at.
Again, I don't think it's the dollar amount. I think it's the projects that we, that are on the list, like doing windows. So if we could start doing windows, you know, replace a classroom, you know, over time. Because some of these things, if we do them over time, you won't end up in a position where in thirty years, you're going to be in the same position where everything has to go place all at once. So if we started to stagger some of these things and say, okay, well, we're going to try to fit these into the budget and do that over time. We need to save the money for the big things that will come in, you know?
Yeah.
I, I just don't know if we're going to get people to agree that these are the priorities because they're certainly not their priorities. That's what they said the last time.
So a plan must be put in place. We have about a year before the Avalon Bay housing, uh, project is completed. So I think it's a good time now to start planning for, we have one year period to get everything ready.
Agreed, and that's why I said, if you, even if we were to go for, let's say we would go for fifty million to do prekness. So if we were to put that on the ballot in November, because we wouldn't get the money potentially until March. We wouldn't be able to start building until the summer. And then it would, you can't build while people are in school, so you potentially going to be two years of building that addition. So you're going to have people there before you even have that building close to being done. So that's not a solution that's going to solve the problem. It, it may help down the line, but you're years away from that when you have people that are going to be coming into the district in a year.
Don't you feel like we'll have the funds to resort to a plan B?
You can't allocate them anywhere else, that's the problem. Once you get the project, we get fifty million dollars for prekness, that money has to go to prekness.
Yeah, but.
It can't be towards school expansion?
No, it has to go to that project that you've submitted.
Well, we have, we have projects that we're working on. Every year we work on projects, right?
Okay.
So you get the bond referendum approved. We had some projects in the operating budget, you subtract that out and then you free up some money. To be able to do some of the other temporary solutions.
But I guess I, I just don't see them going for it. We've got fifty million.
I, I think the championship understands that we have this situation and they're going to expect something from us as far as a referendum, to see our proactive approach to the future. Agree?
Yep.
I think we need a plan for the future.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think, um, really coordinating a plan that's palatable, right? That allocates funds, you know, revisiting the whole layout of what was prioritized, you know? Um, and then like you said, cross some things off and free up some funds.
Mm-hmm.
But, um.
So we've got, it was five million dollars, I think it was allocated to redo the, the locker rooms. So to me, okay, so you could probably get something done that makes them palatable.
Right.
For half a million dollars. So that's a project that we budgeted for that maybe you don't have to go that route. You know, I had suggested, well, the boiler project, replace one boiler in each school. Take the ones that's there, put it in, you know, a store or somewhere and use those for parts until the other one, you know, goes down. Just try to come up with ways to just cut money.
Be creative.
And then come up with a real creative solution that we could get to that would allow us to solve the problem on a bigger scale.
And it also something to consider is that a lot of people in the community agree that if that number was different, that they would have supported the referendum, right? So.
Well, I heard that from the mayor, I didn't hear that from a lot of people.
Yeah, I heard so many people saying, yeah.
Uh, we hear a lot of things from the mayor.
So maybe it's a little.
Matthew.
The problem we have is we were presented the white plan to fix all of this and it was done at the retreat. We all, almost all of us swallowed it comes when they wanted to hand us a four hundred forty million dollar bill. This is a town based upon its income and the way it's been taxed over these years, which some people say is fair, unfair, gets their opinions versus other towns that get extremely large amounts of state support. What it comes down to is we're reaching a pinch point. People want to come here. We have award-winning programs in special education and general education. And we call it the good problem, but the word is it's still a problem. We're going to have to leave the paradigm behind of we're going to own all of our properties and build on our properties. Cause we had a solution that was four times greater than we put out there and they said, no, that. There was plans with extensions on every elementary school building. The problem would have solved the problems we needed to solve. Yeah, if every single building had gotten a wing put on, that would have alleviated the problem. But this town based upon its beliefs in the way it's being taxed and they all think it's fair, and I agree with them, based upon the state funding formula, we're never going to be able to, you know, piece together a bond referendum here and a bond referendum here and a bond, and build them one bit at a time. Because first of all, everybody knows the cost is going to go up, it's never going to go down. That four hundred forty million dollar bond referendum, we bought it back around and gets a five hundred million dollar referendum period, just out, just off of inflation alone. We have to accept the fact that we're not going to be able to just put a building up. We can't do it, it's too much money. And we can't put up one building, we have to put up two or three based upon the astronomically large amount of buildings going up. The one over by the ice rink is going up lightning fast, that's one. There's another eight on top of that that's coming through. We're whistling past the graveyards here. Personally, I think we walk away from the referendums period. And we have to start looking at things like finding locations that we're looking at very carefully right now that are already exist. And for a tenth of the price, we fix them up, we pay into, whether it's going to be Darst Stieses at Patterson or it's going to be Wayne Patterson University or a private school or an empty building. That's going to be the new way this is going to have to be done because the economy and the amount of people coming in here is going to outpace anything we do at the table. Fred, uh, Dr. Tobak is, they're putting, we put up a miracle, hail Mary pass, and it'll look great twelve months from now. Three years down the road, it's going to look peanuts because we've got all these people coming in here. That people tend to know they're not coming in, the demographic says not coming in, oh, they're not coming in.
I'm just trying to figure that, especially since the housing market is doing so well.
Harry, how many units are coming in?
All the people.
Two thousand nine hundred something?
Two thousand nine hundred.
Approved.
Let's be ridiculous and say ten percent of those have kids. That's one school building, if only ten percent of it had kids, ten percent? Would only be having kids come in? I mean, that's a, that's the numbers we're talking about here. I think we've got to start looking in a completely different direction. Would I love to have a new wing on every elementary building? Absolutely. I think it would reflect the, the great system that Wayne has, but the town, and it's reasonable to say, doesn't want to foot that bill. Okay, let's get out of the referendum stuff and let's start looking at plan B and plan C because we're just going to be wasting our time. Cause you want us to do the referendum, but he's pointing out that no matter what we do, it's not going to fix the problem we have.
But we need money to fix the problem, we need money. So you need even, even a thirty million dollar referendum helps frees up some of that money that we allocated for, for maintenance, you know? So that'll, that'll free up some money or we could go to plan B or plan C and search out other kind of space, you know, office buildings or whatever.
There's no way we can sit and do nothing, there's no way.
Right.
Absolutely not.
We have, we have to do something and, and Harry, you're absolutely right. No matter what it is, whether we go rent the, you know, a building over here somewhere, it's still a cost to get that building up to be a school.
Mm-hmm.
And again, you have to follow DLE standards when you're doing it. It's not, you know, we just throw up some walls and oh, it's a classroom. No, there's a lot of other things involved in it. So you're going to need money to do it. You cannot do it out of your operating budget. If you're going to try to do it out of your operating budget, you're going to have class sizes of thirty-five plus kids again. Get, get, that's the real, real, real facts on this. I'm saying it to, you know, shock the world, but when you have no place to go and your footprint is full, what are you going to do? We're a public school system, we have to educate every child. And we all take that seriously or we wouldn't be seen here. But you have to do it, you're going to have to have some money to do it. You know, it's just the way it is. Yeah, well, you know, you get pennies back on your dollars that you sent to the state of New Jersey back. And, you know, all these builders just get to build anyway, so the impact doesn't matter. When are you trying to, you know, the other morning, fifteen minutes to get from McDonald Drive to that, to Riverview Drive? Wait till the five hundred units come in down there and wait till the eight hundred units next to it come in. Want to go through that intersection of Valley and Hamburg in the morning? Forget it.
Wait till they cut it down to one lane.
Right.
Each way.
It's, no matter what we do, we have to do something. That's why we're starting this discussion tonight.
Right.
We have to come up with a plan. We have to develop a plan to move forward that's going to be, that we're going to be able to have children in a classroom, maintain the class sizes where they are, or it's a reality. We're pushing for next year, right now, and we don't even know what the impact from IHM is going to be. Again, we're at the maximum class size. And the problem, the problem exists is too, you don't have classrooms to open other classes. So it's not like we can say, oh, we need another, you know, we're at the max for fifth grade, we're going to open another fifth grade class. And Fallon like said, we don't have the room to do it. You can't do it. Or you're going to have to, or you're going to have to have a real honest discussion about the R word that I really don't want to bring up, but redistricting. And I don't even know how much that's going to help because the buildings are full. It's not like we say, oh, well, we have three elementary schools that only have two hundred kids in, in them, so we have room there. We don't even have that anymore. You know, back in the day when they, twenty eight, twenty-plus years ago, when they talked about redistricting, yeah, there was nobody ever in the corridors. So it was, they were talking about shifting kids there and shifting kids away from, you know, Fallon because Fallon was overcrowded. You guys, you guys remember that conversation? But now you don't have that country anymore. Every place is full.
So what I would say is though, I think we all know the problem. I think what we really need to figure out are the potential solutions. Because I think that's where we are and I think the thing that we're hung up on in terms of conversation is, do we want to move forward with a referendum to potentially get money to support the things that we've already put through that failed? Or I'm saying, let's come up with a plan that we think is going to address the issues that's going to be palatable and then go with a referendum that supports that plan that people will feel better about. Because to me, again, my answer is going to be, if you come and say, okay, well, we're going to do a fifty million dollar referendum. Fifty million dollars, okay, so tell me, what does that fifty million dollars buy me in terms of getting the class sizes down? What does that get me in terms of, you know, shifting the students around? Cause again, we're only looking at potentially absorbing new kids. But the issue is we already have class size problems with the kids we have. So even adding on to prekness isn't going to address the bigger picture issues that we have because prekness is supposed to be an elementary school. We have middle schools that are post-aided, it seems. So again, just by doing one building, and again, you can't assume that all the kids that are going to come in are going to be elementary school age. So you're going to have kids that come into those districts that would end up in the schools that are already packed. And that's not addressed by any of the plan. So we're going to put a plan out there to people and we're going to say, okay, we want to get you, we want you to, you know, support seventy-five million dollars. But at the end of the day, it still doesn't resolve the potential problems that we have. Because prekness is only going to address an elementary school problem.
It, it's, it's a band-aid on the problem for them.
It's not even, we don't know if the kids coming in are going to be in elementary school. Whether they're kids from high school, whether they're kids from middle school, and then they're living there and some will get, you know, they may pick up space, but what if, you know, five percent of the kids that come in go to elementary school and the remaining ninety-five is split between high school and middle school?
You don't know that.
So that's the thing, you're only planning for a possibility of having all new elementary school kids. So to me, you got to look at this from a different vantage point and say, okay, well, what's the fastest solution that's palatable? Because again, if you could find space and rent it, um, like lease it on a long-term basis and put the money into it and say, all right, we got a hundred-year lease. You could do that for a while and then figure out, buy yourself time to figure out what we want. Maybe if the, if that model works, we start divesting some of the properties that we have, sell it, some of the schools, because there's a big real estate boom, we're going to need some more, uh, the housing things that we have to deal with next year. So then we just add them, you know, start leasing more schools.
Wendy Cruz? I mean, uh.
Uh, I was, while you were speaking and trying to think outside of the box, have we, I guess we have still more space in all our middle schools or?
Not a lot.
Not a lot.
We will build the space, maybe forty students in a team. We have space for probably a hundred fifty to two hundred students over Georgia Washington.
So.
So there is, there's space in the middle schools that would just require redistricting.
What, well, wait, I was looking at it, maybe we can consider, and I don't know what that would look like. We'd have to obviously plan and study it a little bit. Is moving fifth grade out of the elementary and then you create space? I mean, I know some middle schools do that, that they start at fifth grade in some house. It's not unheard of, but maybe it's an option.
Well, that would be eighth grade to high schools, high schools have the most space.
Well, I guess you can do it each one up and, you know, move fifth grade and then move eighth grade.
Every option's on the table, you know.
I mean, I don't know.
Educationally, educationally, moving fifth grade to the middle school, I think you'd get most teachers who would say, or those in education would say, that's a big job. Taking those kids and putting them in that rotating schedule and everything else.
Well, I wouldn't change it.
Because you have sixth graders who can't even do that.
I wouldn't change the, the way the school, I wouldn't say change anything about the way the fifth grade works other than the fact that the placement they're there.
Just the location.
You don't change that at the middle school process? Well, it still stays the same, but it's just the only location. Not necessarily, let's put it this way, the fifth graders, they couldn't have the same program that they have all the other elementary schools. They have things like specials, right? And so somehow, when they go to special, right, that has to fit in with what the building will allow for. So if you have a library and you have a schedule where the most of the kids are on, those, all those schedules are pre-packed, so it's, you could do it, but I don't.
I'm not saying, yeah, it's all here, but it's.
No, I understand that it's also, it's very hard to separate a group of kids from the, the schedule of the building.
I mean, I think it's worth exploring if that would address some of our space concerns.
So there's space in West Milford. Are you willing to send your kids to West Milford for us to pay tuition at West Milford?
It's gotta be here. Because I could talk about Wayne.
It's here.
I mean, the other thing is, is find space that you could actually use for the high school campus, for at least one of the schools, and then combine some of the middle schools and put them in a high school.
So that's all redistricting. And we have, we have a proposal, right? We're requesting proposals, Miss Mott.
Yes, there are a few things that we're pursuing.
Yep.
One of which is the redistricting, and we have requested proposals out. And they're due back in June 13th at 10 o'clock. And we have had inquiries and some agencies that have requested some additional information. We provided to all of that. So we just paid some returns on the 13th of June. We also have reached out to our architect record to explore temporary classroom units, which are trailers, people refer to them as trailers. With the idea that we place them at our elementary schools. So PSA is working on that. We've gone back and forth. We provided a quick survey of the energy needs for those sites because obviously if you don't have enough power for the trailers, you would have to upgrade that. So they have that. So we're working on a proposal. We don't have it back yet from our architects, but we're trying to identify the schools that have adequate power, those that do not and need electrical upgrades. And we wanted to make sure that we could fit in TCU units on site because that's a big issue is site work. So we're looking at that to be part of this proposal. Work to identify other utilities because you need underground water and sewer. So that's something that is, we're looking for some advice on. And once we get all of that, including heating and ventilation systems, they'll provide us in a rough budget, which they call an order of magnitude budget. So we have been doing that. Sensitive referendum results came in. And we've also, which I think we've touched on a couple times tonight, is Preckus School. We've identified that this is, and I think we remember at the retreat, that this is an intermediary step for some. We were, we continue to expect increased growth at the elementary level. So since we've been working with those estimates, we have existing exterior envelope project, which is underway as a ROD grant. So we're gonna continue doing that. We hope to lift off over the summer on that. We also have an interior restoration project that's gonna continue through the old section of Preckus. So we're gonna go upstairs on the top floor and then turn our attention down to the bottom floor to bring that all back online. Again, to kind of relieve some of the pressure as it develops again as a short-term step. And then tonight, I know, Don, we still need your signature if you don't have it on some paperwork. We're gonna submit two grants for early childhood expansion money that became available as the second round from the Department of Education and SDA. So that'll be going down. We have two projects there. One is gonna be an ADA, American with Disability Upgrade, which will include an elevator and a chairlift to make a handicap accessible. And that roughly, right now, is a rough estimate is $1.7 million. Again, 40% of that, which we hope to get, we would then have to come up with about 6, around $700,000 in local funds. Estimated cost for the next item, which is the interior renovation. We could bring them up to today's standards. All the renovated areas that we're restoring now, we can renovate them and bring them up to today, today's standard. In the old section, we look to see that project to be about $10.5 million. And these are being submitted in the next few days down to Trenton. We considered, because you remember, we anticipated some of these intermediary, not only the steps we then build out of the space, but we also tried to plan a ROD grants and early childhood money to try to get to projects that we felt were more of an issue to get going now. Like a lot of ROD grants with the, with the roofs that we're doing now, and that'll take, take place over summer as well. So these are all things that we're working on, and that's Preckus. So again, the 1.7 for the ADA and then interior renovation for about $10.5 million.
Can we have a Google meets slash town hall with the public? See what their thoughts are?
Schedule that. Come September, we have to sit down at a retreat and come up with a plan. And what direction we're gonna go?
At that retreat, would it be okay if we have all the enrollment numbers for all the different public schools, high schools, middle schools, right in front of us so we can make a better look at it, so we know exactly what's going on where?
Of course. Yeah, we have that available every day.
Yeah, we should hand it up to the people who come to attend.
Yeah, perhaps we could hand that out to the public.
Be part of the, be part of the.
Yeah.
Meeting packet.
I would say, I hope that people will come to attend these meetings. If we're gonna open them up publicly, proactively this time and try to have feedback and, you know, here from town, I really hope that they take us up on it and show up to give that information. This way we can do, you know, what they're trying, you know, what they think is right.
I, I think though, you have to make it not only in public, but like during COVID, people are still, you know, busy, then we should have the online opportunity and actually to try to get maximum people to attend and ask questions, not require them to come in, but also be able to ask on the phone or and like phone it in or do it online. I think that's gonna be vital.
Virtual meetings or phone?
They're a little hard to control, right?
Well.
It's like you have 100 people on there that everybody wants to talk.
They, they can raise them.
No, it's. We have meetings at the old time.
Yeah.
We've done it.
Yeah, we've done it.
We've done it.
We're the hundreds.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay. Anybody else?
You remember.
Okay.
Yes.
You are? Uh, Miss Mott, any additions to the agenda?
There are two additions tonight. Under X Emergent School Resource, again, this is a public work session, but under emergent school resource. We have X1, which is approval of settlement agreement and release. And that reads as follows. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of Superintendent, hereby approves settlement agreement and release in the matter of Wayne Custodial Maintenance Association dated May 28, 2024, arbitration WD-2024-001 and per document number CO-2023-052, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps requiring in terms of the settlement to further implement same. And the other addition is X2, which is an approval of settlement and agreement and general lease. And that reads as follows. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, hereby approves a settlement agreement and release in the matter of student ID number 7570013442, agency number 2024-36707, dated May 12, 2024, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms and settlement of the, to further implement same. That concludes today's agenda.
This plan will open for public comments on agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, addresses, and subject matter. Comments gonna be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under whole business. Do I have a mover? Mr. Jirano, Mr. Prasaka. Anyone from the public who needs to speak on an agenda item?
Seeing no approach, you have to move.
Thank you.
This is one agenda. Do I have a mover for the agenda?
Move.
Second.
Mr. Faber, Mrs. Rigoloso. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, local. Oh, wait.
Oh, sorry. I wanted to, I understand we are having a new principal on the agenda under emergent. Can we talk about the process and how principal is selected for the position? I think that would be helpful for a public and everyone to understand, you know, what that looks like.
So the district has a long established history of basically starting the interview process at the building. So ultimately, when it comes to a principal position, candidates are selected from among, in this particular case, 120 different people that applied for a principal position at our state elementary school. So from there, we look for candidates who have some administrative experience, people who we think would flesh out and add to our administrative team. People with skills that would be able to move this school. People with a background and a solid school district, lots of different things that we, we look for. And we basically, we, we take the candidates that are identified. We start with the interview process at the building level. We ask the same questions, and in the end, the number of candidates are moved forward. So the building level interviews do not necessarily lead to recommendations for hire, but what they lead to is candidates to move forward. Then the candidates come to the central office, and ultimately, they're interviewed by committee. Here, you're interviewed by principals, interviewed by directors. So they make their way through that process and candidates are moved ahead eventually to me. And so eventually, I, I interview each of the candidates. Basically, we go through the same process, but the process is also very controlled. So at every stage of the process, there are questions that are asked that are scripted. And so then from those questions, determination to me, there's a scoring sheet, there's a rubric that we use. And ultimately, everyone independently writes down their score for each of the candidates. And then based on those scores, that's what will move forward. So it's, like I said, it's a long, longstanding tradition of the district to start these interviews at the, at the building level.
In, in the group that makes the selection, is it always the same group of people? Or do you rotate different personnel to kind of make the part of the selection group?
So when it comes to, when people come here, there's only, there's only a certain people that you can choose with. So for the directors, for example, all the people who are directors would be the people who we interview. But down in the building level, let's see the story. Don, do you have anything you wanted to add to the process?
We looked very closely at the process a number of years ago to make sure that every candidate who comes in is treated fairly. So once the criteria are very clearly delineated in the job description, we're also looking at building a team because each principal wears multiple hats in terms of their contributions for curriculum instruction and assessment. So you, you want to, sometimes there are specific skill sets that you're looking for, people who have experience. And now it's, you know, very important that anyone who comes in has a proven track record of using data to inform instruction and can show examples where they've had success and they've had substantial gains. You know, this is very public and it's very important that we maximize learning for every student. We, based on the training we had, every candidate is asked the same questions. You can ask the follow-up, but it's consistent and in line with the question you're asking so that you don't have an opportunity to have me ask a question that lets everyone believe something that I didn't ask you because it may give you an advantage. And there's really no discussion of, other than, they were nice. There's a point person, it's usually our HR director. If she's not here, then there's a point person from that department who collects all the rating sheets, tabulates, and there's no conversation about it. And then the items are passed on, and those are stored and secured here. So if there's ever a question, we have them all here. It's a very fair process.
Can you hear it? Local. Mr. Jirano? Yes. Mrs. Oldmendry?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Winton? Yes. Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Prasaka?
Yes.
And Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Motion carries. This time we'll open to the public the general comments. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens to comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state their names, address the subject matter. Comments limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight, but as a subject under whole business. This time a mover, Mr. Jirano. Mrs. the Mandry. Whoa.
Mrs. Mandry.
You have a public listen to speak. No, sit down.
Yes.
I can't talk.
So Dave Jobs, Jack 64 Cedar Place.
Hello.
Hello, Dave.
So unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the last board meeting. It was actually my wife's birthday. So I got one out, obviously. So I'm here today because the last board meeting was when it was official with my retirement, September 1st. So I just wanted to come and just thank you all. Just, well, personally, thank Dr. Topac and his administration and the Board of Education for bringing me home to Wayne to finish my career in education. Being a lifetime Wayne resident, I'm a proud Wayne Valley alum, 1979. And you gave me the opportunity to give back to my community, which I'll be eternally grateful for. So thank you for that. Although challenging at times, you know, I love every minute working with our administrative teams at both high schools, our staff, our coaches, and most important, our student athletes and our students. We're all in this profession for the same reason. And that's to provide the best opportunities for our students and to make a lasting impact on their lives. So I thank you for providing the environment where athletes can thrive and for supporting all of our programs. And I look forward to seeing the continued success of our programs for years to come. And since I'm not going anywhere anytime soon, I'm gonna be, you'll see me at a number of the games and plays and so forth. I'll be around. So again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come back and finish my career here.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who needs to speak?
Seeing no approach, I'm going to close.
Mr. Faber, Mr. Jirano. Any old business, new business?
Since the summer is approaching, and I know a lot of students will need to register and re-register for their sports and have to deal with medicals and nursing. And since I understand what that looks like as a hands-on parent, I would like for us to consider reviewing the process and the workflow of things to make it as easiest for the nurses who are in the receipt of this and the parents as well. Because it's not right now easy. A lot of times, you know, the hours that are provided aren't sufficient. So what you end up doing as a parent and a student is wait for two hours in the line to get to see the nurse. So I would like for us to look at, to do something better so that when you have to wait, you have a time slot or whatever, and you can just come in and out so we don't create lines and kind of make it a little, now with the technology, whether it's an app upload. You know, I don't know what it is, I don't have the solutions, but I know for sure that there are so many out there and we may already have the technology in there because we get a lot of great technology. Um, I would like for us to start looking at some solutions. And maybe it's not ready for this year, but at least we can be ready for the next period in the winter and so on.
Local, not a source.
Um, we had an unusual ending to the meeting last week. There's a couple things I want to say in front of that meeting. First of all, publicly congratulate all of the musicians and all of the music educators for a fantastic program and a fantastic year. I also want to acknowledge a deep sincere thanks to Jen Barano. With help of the Special Olympics, she started the Unified Sports Pro-
With help of the Special Olympics, she started the Unified Sports Program. And we saw those wonderful people there at the program and my hats off to them. And, you know, one of the reasons why this is such a fantastic district or things just like this. So I'm fortunate, wasn't able to say it to the public here, but I wanna get it on record to congratulate and thank you for all of their efforts.
So I mentioned this to you sometime. But, you know, it kind of goes in line with what we're talking about, having these meetings on Google meets to accommodate people who are busy and such. Potentially, if we could, maybe we could look into live streaming our meetings on Facebook or something like that. Because if people are on the go and they want, you know, they wanna try to listen to what's going on, you know, it's hard if they're not near their home TV set because they can't turn it on anywhere. I can't watch my TV on my phone unless I'm on my own home wifi. So doing something like that might allow more people to see what's going on real time. And we could even have the comments, like streaming on the TV somewhere. You could, you know, just understand what people are saying as it happens.
We actually had a next conversation tonight with the Matt Tech guy before the meeting.
Oh, okay, good.
So we're talking about that. Anyone else?
Yeah, just a board comment. Wanted to reiterate since we had an abrupt ending to the last meeting. It was great seeing the Unified Sports Teams being recognized. I did participate in the inaugural Turkey Travis, which was a huge fundraiser and a success last fall. And I hope to be able to attend this fall again. And yeah, congratulations to all the musicians that we, we recognized.
Anyone else? Again, to reiterate what my fellow board members have said tonight to our Unified Sports, we, this district has gone way far above any other school district in the state with our Unified Sports. And we thank everybody who's involved with that, from the parents to Dr. Sir and Jen Morano, everyone who has made that program just large, along with our teachers, who really have done a good job with that program that, that we couldn't have done without all these people together. You know, as they say, it takes a village to come together. Well, a lot of people came together on that, on all sides, which is great. Our musicians, heck, Mr. Paterno and the band, and the band director at Wayne Valley, they have it made. But the teachers we have in elementary school and middle school, by the time they get there, what they can do with these young people is incredible. Where they were, you know, where they've come from, the journey that they take. And then we look at an academic, we're handing out academic awards and these, these students are doing this and that, they're doing a hundred other things besides the academics. It's just, it's, it's incredible. And it's, it's a testament to Dr. Topac and Mrs. Raishman and the administration and the teachers, what they do every day. It's not easy. And Mr. Dryja, I go back with you all the way. So, long way. Even when I walked off a twelve-yard penalty when I was only ten. You never let me forget. But thank you, Dave. You stepped in, you really helped us, you got us into a really great place. And we always appreciate it. We wish we had your back a lot sooner than we did. Wouldn't be happy to steal you from West Essex. All right?
One more thing, I just wanna say, speaking of that last meeting, I watched Mr. Paterno. And I was, what is his name? Holy crow. But passion, no matter what you do, passion creates momentum. And it's encouraging and same with you, Dave. You know, your impact on all the athletes. I mean, everybody you talk to, you know, you, you really made a difference, so, right? Isn't that what it's all about? And I think just working as a whole group and even on the board, for me, it's, you know, it's time and it's energy and everything else like that. But when you're committed to success, and not your own success, it's the success of people around you. It makes a huge difference, so.
That was it.
Yeah.
Take a motion to adjourn. Motion. Mr. Giordano, this is. Thank you, everyone.